Rock Region, is it still Metro or just Rock Region?
Rock Region Metro.
Rock Region Metro. And this started back, Candy and Jamie came to me and visited with me about some of the federal money we were getting. We'd been receiving money since 2013. And the amount has changed yearly, but it's roughly between $850,000 and $910,000 annually. It was $910,000 this year. And we currently have a balance of $2,452,422. And this is a chance to start, a small start, on public transportation here in Conway. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jamie and Candy. Hey Candy, could you pull the mic to you? That's all right. It may not be on.
It may not be on, there it is. Wanda Crawford, and she's the interim executive director and CFO, Director of Finance and Administration. And Justin Avery, he is the Assistant Director of Finance. We had, Greg Nation is coming from the Arkansas Department of Transportation, but he's not here yet. So we'll introduce him, we may have to introduce him at council meeting. But we'll introduce him. But if you look at your packets, what we're going to ask you for tonight is to pass a resolution. What this resolution is going to do is going to designate Central Arkansas Transit Authority doing business as Rock Region Metro Plan. And we call them Rock Region from here on out. It is going to, they're going to actually start receiving our 5307 funds. That's that $2,407,000 that y'all saw. We gave you the, exactly what we got from the Highway Department, $2,452,422. And what the purpose of this for is, this is going to be for a van pool program only, right now. This is our baby step into getting into transportation. And what we found out was, first thing was, this will not cost the city one cent. They will actually take it, hire a contractor. We actually saw a really good one, as in Enterprise, and we were very impressed. They would actually, someone like that, or them, would take it over. And they would be in charge of the vans and all that kind of stuff. And they would, the, our portion of the project would be people paying to ride the van pool. So that is how this one works, so it does not cost the city a dime. And tonight, if you approve the resolution, what we're going to be doing, from that point, the mayor will write a letter to Mr. Greg Nation with Arkansas DOT. He will take it to the Federal Transportation Administration. From that point, he will get it approved, which, I mean, in all of our talks from day one with him, that's going to happen. You know, because he was suggested that we do it this way. Instead of us trying to do something that we had no clue, they're going to actually do all of our reporting, keep our money the way it should be. And that's what they do. And so that's kind of, you know, the partnership we will have with them. And once he does that and gets that approved, then we've got, you saw in your packet, the memorandum of agreement. And that has already been looked at by Chuck, and there's our city attorney Chuck Clausen, so he's the one that went back and forth. And their attorney, and so they've worked it out where if you decide you want to do this, then we'll have a, we'll get the resolution passed tonight. I'll do the letter for the mayor. Then Mr. Nation will do his part. Then we'll sign the, that'll give the mayor the authorization to sign the memorandum of agreement. And then they will actually get started. And I'll let them explain kind of what they'll, how they'll do everything and get it started. And you've got a fact sheet on them in your packet. And basically, all the, it was just a win-win. So that's why we wanted to bring it to y'all tonight. We got all the kinks worked out of it, because when we first started, there was, well, this had to be written this way. And, you know, we got the Highway Department to help us on our side, you know, with the resolution. They helped us with, you know, if you look at their stuff, everything matches up. And right now, just remember, it's going to be from Conway to Little Rock. That's what the, you know, baby stepping it right now. We may get to do some other stuff later, but we won't do that until we get this going. And one of the things I was telling the mayor today is we're going to have probably some time in between when we get, folks are going to hear about it and get excited before they actually hire, get the contractor on board. You know, who's actually going to run the vans and maintenance them and everything. And I told the mayor, I would let him put, you know, they can call me, I'm going to start a list for the contractor. You know, people that are interested in it and letting them connect with each other, because we don't have to do any of that. But we need, I kind of felt like we needed somebody from the city to, because this is our money, and this is our town. And, you know, we want them to feel like, we, at least, we can get the questions answered for them. And some of them will be intimidated and not want to call so-and-so, you know. So we're going to do it like that. So Jamie can answer questions too, so we'll probably all be a big team on that. But we're going to make sure that if anybody that wants to do, wants to ride on the vans, we'll help them get situated with the right folks and get their stuff taken care of. So I'm going to kind of turn it over to Becca, and y'all feel free to ask any questions. If Mr. Nation comes in, he is not, I will introduce him.
And I want to thank Rock Region and Jamie and Candy and Chuck Clausen. They have worked really well together and worked out all the kinks on this. And I think they've got it to where it's going to be easy to understand and for us to work with this. The money that we've been getting since 2013, that was actually money that was coming into Conway. And we were not using it, it was going to other cities. So I think this might be a good thing for us to start, like they said, baby step in our transportation system.
And one thing, just for fun purposes, y'all've got that little sheet that the Highway Department gave us. That kind of shows you who got our money and what they used it for, you know. That was just kind of a little cheat sheet on the screen.
And Jack helped us a lot too. I see you back there.
Well, thank you Candy, I think that was a pretty thorough explanation. So I guess at this point, I would ask, what questions do you have of Metro on this project? Or anything about Metro that you'd like to know?
Why don't you just kind of tell us a little more about what you currently do in Little Rock? I mean, just maybe a general description of your operation.
Sure. Well, Metro is the public transit agency for Plaski County. So we serve the cities of Little Rock, North Little Rock, we serve the county of Plaski. And then we also have a small portion of funding coming to us from Sherwood, Jacksonville, and Malmell, where we have limited express routes. We have 25 bus routes. Most of them are in Little Rock, because that's where most of the, what we call in the industry, trip generators are. Like places that you would want to go to as a commuter, hospitals, employers, grocery stores, banks, things like that. And then the next highest amount of routes we have is in North Little Rock. We carry about 2.5 million passenger trips every year. And we're the largest public transit agency in Arkansas. And we're really the only one that, I would say, that truly serves an urban core area. There are eight public transit agencies in Arkansas that carry 5307 funds. And some of those you see on this list from the Highway Department, Texarkana, Hot Springs, Pine Bluff, Ozark Regional Transportation, and a couple of others. But we're the largest, and we are the ones serving an urban core.
The buses pick up at one location and transfer to one location in Little Rock. And from there, people would be dispersed, is that correct?
That's correct. Well, 23 of our 25 bus routes, you have to look at our system holistically. It was built 32 years ago. And even though we've had a couple of changes here and there to different routes, really, when you open up a map and look at our system, you're looking at the same kind of system that was built about 32 years ago. And there are a couple of different reasons for that. One is our funding structure. We get most of our funds from the local jurisdictions. And the way that they share the cost of the public transit agency is to only pay for the service miles that operate in their jurisdictions. That makes it very fair and an equitable way for them to split up the money. But it makes it rather challenging for us to plan transit. Because really, when you think about riders, they don't really care if they cross three different jurisdictions to get from home to their business. They just care that they had a safe, affordable, convenient ride. But there's a lot of, you know, that goes into the back end of that, of making sure that we get service miles. Really, what is happening is that each jurisdiction is funding basically the status quo of all the service miles from the year before. And they're really not adding a bunch, and giving an opportunity to add a bunch of extra service miles on top of that, because that would be more money. And really, when it comes down to it, we're kind of competing with other things that the city has to fund, like fire and police and all kinds of things. And so we're grateful for the funding that we get, but that's kind of why the system's basically the same. But yes, there are 25 bus routes right now. 23 of them come to the bus station in downtown Little Rock. That's, if you've been there and seen it, it's about three blocks off the River Market. It's right in the middle of a heart of lots of economic development right now. The new Hilton Garden Inn just opened right across the street from us. There's Homewood Suites on another side, a bowling alley that just opened up on the other side. And then I'm sure there's something coming, being developed on the backside of the Tech Park on our fourth border. So we're right in the heart of everything. And then you can catch transfers to go to other places. right in the heart of everything, and then you can catch transfers to go to other places in the community. Two of the routes actually terminate at what we call the Midtown Transfer Hub, for lack of a better term, and it's behind the Midtown Target on a little strip that used to be called St. Vincent Avenue, if you know where I'm talking about. Now it's called Midtown Avenue. And so two of them in there. But you can get transfers from downtown to those, those two routes that end at that target.
That's right off Interstate 30, isn't it?
Off 630, yes. And the, and the main bus station is very close to I-30. Yes.
So where would the van pool, when they pick up in Conway and head to Little Rock, where would they be dispersed there, or how does that work?
Well, those are to be determined questions, because we first have to be the designated recipient of the funds for Conway to get started on the planning of it. But I imagine that it'll really be based off of where the people who are participating in the van pool live here in Conway, and we'll, we'll check on some convenient points where they can be dropped off, like a park-and-ride kind of situation, and, and work off what works best for them. And I bet you anything, if it's like our transit in our community, there'll be some kind of clear winners that rise to the top. People like to be dropped off in safe locations. Usually, it's major shopping centers, things like that.
So given the amount of money that you see that we get every, do you have an estimate as to how many buses might, or one bus run, and would the riders also have to pay something to ride it, or would that cover everything?
Well, there's definitely a fare structure, and the user fees, the fares, are what is covering the portion that normally Conway would have to put in as the city, as the local funds match. So with the van pool program, we have enough money, we're pretty confident, after doing some preliminary research, that's very, very preliminary. But we have money, and we think that the fees and the fares that we would charge are going to be covered, all of the local match will be covered by the user fees. So there will be a fare, and it will be cheaper than it would be to fill up your own car with gas and drive to Conway back and forth, 20-something business days out of the month. So we're really aiming for commuters here. It's, it's difficult to know at this point how many vans we would have, because we don't know exactly what the interest level is. But I can tell you, just from some really informal surveying that we've done of our own riders, that the Conway-Little Rock connection beats out even the popularity of the Saline County-Little Rock connection. So there are people who will be interested in this, and it really just kind of depends on how we market the program and who comes out of the woodwork to do this program. So it's just a start. Without having done it before, we really don't know yet.
There used to be a state van that used to take, like, state employees to Little Rock. Would they?
I think it still does, doesn't it?
That would continue like that and not interfere with that?
Right.
I didn't know if they would catch on to this one and...
So are these funds, you know, and it probably would take a little while to get it up and going. So can these funds be carried over and used in the next fiscal year and to keep it, I guess, keep that money available for the same routes?
Yes. FTA funding lasts for six years. So basically, from the, the year that we would put this in place in 2018, we would have until 2023 to spend the money, out of that earmarked year. And so you can keep adding it to, which is kind of what has happened so far. Basically, RDOT put a hold on your money back in, a couple of years ago, I think, and that's why you have accrued a $2.4 million balance. And so you have, definitely have more money than it would ever cost to probably run a van pool program, but it's, it is less money than it would take to run a transit system like you see in Little Rock. So this is a, a baby step in between. And if we were to do a different program, we would need to come up with a new MOU that matches the scope of whatever that program is. And we can certainly do that. I think we need to see kind of what the interest level is for the van pool program first, as a good starter step.
I see on this list here of the previous year, starting in 2013, the annual apportionment, it's roughly $900,000 a year, high 800s, last year was 910. In 2017, it was 910,000. Is this an ongoing, I mean, are we confident this will be an ongoing amount that's coming our way? It's not something that's going to be cut by the state or the Fed or something? I mean, this, this program is going to continue?
It's based on your population, so yes. You've, you've crossed the 50,000 mark, which is what has made you eligible for these funds. And so I don't really see that changing when I look at the demographics coming out of this region, and you look at the Metro Plan numbers that they put together twice a year for the metro trends, and you see how it's growing. So I don't think you would lose this funding. I think the only way you could is to lose population numbers, but Justin, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Now, in, in one sense, these are Conway's dollars, but they're kind of not, since we can't, since we can't use them, we're not really getting anything out of it. So I love this idea. I think it's wonderful. I wholeheartedly want y'all to proceed with the, I know there's a lot of work to be done, but it sounds great. Who, at, at some point, though, it probably don't have to show us, but whoever's contributing this $900,000 a year, do you have to show them your interaction with Conway, so that, you know, we're not paying $900,000 for a one-van trip a week? You know, I mean, is there some kind of proof that shows you're actually servicing Conway to that degree of money?
Sure. Well, the, the budgeting, as far as the budget reporting, what that looks like, all the logistics can be worked out once we have the designation, and we'll do, you know, we'll work together, as we've been working with Candy and Mayor and everyone else on the team, to just do whatever you guys want to see. But basically, we can't spend that money for anything but Conway transit projects, so it's, it's not even a, a choice for us. And, and the FTA is the one that apportions the annual amount that you guys will get, and it's based on your population and population density. So it'll, it'll fluctuate every year, but as long as your population's going up, you should get more and more. So, yeah. And we, and we'll, obviously, regular budget reporting to you guys to let you know what's in the balance and how we could possibly use some of those funds would be part of our management of the project. We will be procuring a group, as Candy indicated, to actually run the service, but they will report to us, and we are, have a 32-year, 32-year history of reporting to the FTA, and reporting to the FTA, of course, is no joke. So we'll handle that part on behalf of the whole project.
Great.
Would you explain liability as well, please?
Liability? That might be a Justin territory. Well, I mean, basically, whenever we procure anything, we work all the liabilities out with the vendors. So there's a contract that we have to put in place with the operating vendor that, that will be put in place as part of the procurement project. And then, other than that, we have a relationship with Metro Plan, and maybe Wanda could speak to this more about the liability that we have for Metro right now, and just explain how that works.
And certainly, as far as liability, as far as accidents, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, as far as what, the cities?
No, you would not be liable at all.
That's what I want to hear.
The great recipient of this, and so basically, we would be procuring with purpose, and so the vendor would be responsible to have full coverage, and then also, we have coverage through Karma, Central Arkansas Risk Management Association. So we'll be covered two different ways.
And I'd also like to introduce Greg Nation. He's the Public Transportation Administrator at the Arkansas Department of Transportation, and he's been a huge help on this project as well, so.
Would we have a board member from Conway on this board, or not?
Well, no, because we have our own board for Metro, but through this memo of understanding, we would be reporting to you guys in whatever we come up with, of all the ways that we, you know, want to have reporting between the two entities. So if you guys, I mean, our, our public meetings, our, our board meetings are open to the public. If you want to come attend any single one of them, you're more than welcome. Or we could have an agreement where we came down and sat through some of your city meetings if, if needed, or on a regular basis. It's just kind of up to what you guys would like to see.
Back to a question that was asked a minute ago. Is this, we're going to start with one vehicle. Is that correct?
Well, we could be starting with two. It just kind of depends on how many people sign up for the van pool program.
Okay. And if that, those vans are loaded up and taken to Little Rock with those people in there, what do they do when they're down there? What do those vans do, or what do those drivers do? Are they at the movie the rest of the day?
Well, the van pool drivers are actually the commuters themselves. So one of the commuters serves as a captain of the van pool. So I imagine, once we procure the contract, a lot of the questions, and a question I would have as a rider is, how good of a driver is this person? You know, that kind of stuff. And so we'll, we'll be covering all of that through the contract and through the procurement of that, whoever is going to run that actual program. And then they will, I'm sure, be doing things to address those concerns. Because I would also, as a rider, want to know that someone was drug-free driving me somewhere and things like that. So they'll be dealing with all of that. But basically, the van will go wherever they go to work, and they will drop off at the rendezvous point that is agreed upon by all the other pool riders, and that could be the downtown bus station and maybe one other location. And then they'll go to work, and then at the end of the day, go pick everybody back up at their designated spots and bring them back to Conway.
Is there a place you could leave the van, rather than taking it, the driver taking it to their work?
I suppose that's possible. I'd have to ask that question of, of everyone, but I don't know if the driver or the captain, if that would be a really big selling point for someone to be a captain.
Since this is new, I ask a lot of crazy questions.
Oh, no worries. That's fine. I can certainly find out.
Best-case scenario, when would the first van start operation?
After we receive FTA confirmation that Metro could be the designated recipient for Conway's funds. It's probably going to take about six to eight months to procure the program and to get it off the ground, handle all the marketing and branding and all the outreach that we would have to do.
We've been working on this roughly six to eight months already, have we not?
Correct. Just to get the information.
It's a pretty good process.
Things that they can do in the future. Van pool's not going to ever use all of our money.
That's true. I mean, in the future, and granted, the user fees are paying what's, what Conway's portion of the local match would be right now with this particular program. But if you wanted to try to do something like a small community shuttle route that, for example, circulated among the universities here, or something like that, you might have enough money to do a very small route. That's a fixed route, so it's a designated route. It's always the same every day. It goes on the same schedule, that kind of thing. It's what we call a fixed route. So it's possible for you guys to do that, but you would have to come up with matching funds. And there are different match formulas based on different projects. So for example, if we were buying a bus right now, or if you were buying a bus, it's an 85-15 match. The federal government gives you 85% of the funds, you provide 15% of the funds. If it's operating expenses, it's 50-50. So it just kind of depends on what the program is and what it requires to operate and run, and what assets it requires as to what the cost would be to the city for something like that. But I can tell you, I used to work at Access in Little Rock for the past six years before I took my job at Metro. Access, for those of you who don't know, is a nonprofit that's kind of similar to Easter Seals. They, they treat and educate young people, children and adults with developmental disabilities, and a lot of them will never be able to drive. And so a lot of them who were coming from Conway used to wish that there was paratransit service here in Conway. If you have a local fixed route, paratransit service is based up to 3/4 of a mile off whatever that fixed route is, and you're required by the ADA law to have it. So if you had a local fixed route, you would automatically be entering the paratransit game. But also, I know for a fact, I know families who have asked for it who live here in Conway. So something to think about. And you could also use it for other transit-oriented products. So we could have some nice shelters put in for these park-and-ride spots. A lot of that requires negotiation. If it's on city property, it's usually not a big deal, because there's usually a city easement within so many feet of the road. If it's on private property, we are well-versed in going to private companies and asking about shelters and have been pretty successful. You'll find shelters of ours at the outlets at Little Rock and other privately-owned properties that we've negotiated successfully. So we could do some of those things as well with the money.
Any other questions?
One of the main things to remember is that the van pool is, you know, people are going to think it's a bus automatically, but it's a van pool program from Conway to Little Rock. That's all we're doing right now.
And would they have to be, they would have to be signed up to ride the van, is that correct? So they can't just decide, one day, I need to go to the mall or to the hospital and get on the bu, the van to go? No?
No. That would be more like a fixed route service. And that's something that, you know, we could work up toward. I mean, I've been asked a million times in my role at Metro about basically what you're talking about, like a fixed route from Conway to Little Rock. That would require probably a bus more like you would see in Little Rock, like a 35 or 40-foot bus. And it'd probably be full of people who don't want to drive and don't want to sit in traffic and can use free Wi-Fi and, you know, read or catch up on their work on the way to work, you know. So that is a dream, I think, of a lot of riders in our metro area. So that's just something else that we could use the money for eventually. Now, that would require, you know, definitely more investment from the local jurisdictions here, and probably Faulkner County as well, but that, that's definitely a dream of riders.
I think it sounds like a great first step.
Yeah, it's a good first step. And it may involve into something really, really good for the city.
I think we can kind of test the interest of the community. Especially, we get a lot more questions about, well, what are you going to do next? That will tell us.
How many passengers on the van?
Well, when we talked to, we had a preliminary conversation with Enterprise, because a lot of rental companies in other states, they're the ones who've actually become the operators for programs like this, and it helps for a couple of reasons. And they can get brand-new kind of SUV-type vehicles. So a lot of the vehicles that they were talking about were more like SUVs or minivans. But it could be, I think it can be almost anything if it's a private operator. I'll tell you that we have support vehicles at Metro, and they have to be American brands, because there's a buy America mandate from the FTA. So it's not like we're driving Toyotas around to, you know, with our support staff. So I think there's a little more flexibility, because they're a private vendor. Do you agree? Okay.
Four and 15 passengers.
So between four and 15 passengers.
But these don't have to be ADA compliant, then?
I think that we would make sure that they were if we knew that somebody who had those kinds of needs was in the van pool program. So that's why you, that's another good reason of why you would have to sign up in advance, so we would know what your needs are.
Is it a, on the scale where the driver would need a CDL license?
I don't believe so, but I think you'll probably have to have a license in good standing and a very clean driving record and be drug-free. So that's all to be worked out with the contract. But I know that we have very high standards for our drivers, and I can't imagine that we would choose anything lower for anyone driving any other vehicle that's even remotely associated with Metro, so.
Are these drivers paid or anything? Stipend?
They get to have their user fee waived, so, and then they also have the advantage of being the first one in the car and a stop right at their house.
That's worth more than a little stipend.
Well, excellent. Well, thank you guys very much. We, we are really excited about starting it and kind of taking a baby step to having regional connectivity, so.
Thank you very much. Jamie, I know you have a long way to go, and I know it's supposed to rain hard, so why don't you?
Well, I have a little presentation.
Well, just come on. Oh, the next meeting? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, I guess everybody will... Can she do it now? I mean, can we? Steve said, Steve said he's got it. He's, yeah. I'd be concerned. Anyway, we'll, we'll get back together here at 6:30, everyone. Thank you. Thank you.
I can't really see what she's going to say. I'm going to have to calm down.
It's a good thing. Well, I wrote her.
Father in heaven, we bow humbly in your presence.
Lord, thank you for your goodness and your mercy, and just your love for each of us. We pray, Lord, for our decisions tonight and how they impact our city and the citizens of this city. We pray, Lord, that you would be with us and help us to make the best decision. In Christ's name, amen.
Praise the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now call this meeting to order. Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Hawkins?
Here.
Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Ms. Mel?
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Isby?
Here.
And Mr. Pruitt will not be here tonight. Let's see, you should have received copies of the February 13th, 2018 City Council minutes. Any changes or corrections?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero. Next up, we have our financials. Mr. Tyler Winningham will report the financial report ending January 31st of 2018. Mr. Winningham.
Everything's good. Thank you. Good night.
That's so good.
It seriously is. I mean, that's really the underlying theme tonight. I mean, if you look across, you know, all these funds that we look at monthly, which we call our major funds, every one of them is in a better shape January 18 than they were January 17. General Fund is the biggest example of that. You know, for one thing, sales tax is up almost 7%, so we're staying on that train. Overall revenues, you know, about $300,000 compared to where they were same month last year, and expenditures are down. So when we were looking at January in 17, we were off to $118,000 deficit start, and this year we're off to $306,000 surplus start. So everything, everything's looking well. And as I mentioned, all the other funds as well, they're not quite as dramatic as General Fund, but they all are off to a better start than what we saw in 17. So, you know, the same trend we had going last year seems to be still intact. Department heads are keeping their expenditures in check, and revenues are looking good. Hopefully that keeps going.
Thank you, Ms. Winningham. Any questions from Ms. Winningham?
Make a motion to approve the monthly financials.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the monthly financials. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven to zero. Thank you, Ms. Winningham. Tonight, we have two public hearings on the agenda. The first public hearing is a discussion of the closing of a unbuilt right-of-way running through property identified as 2902 Pheasant Road. I now declare this public hearing open, and if someone would like to speak for or against, if you approach the podium, please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Henry Zimrevenner. I reside at 2990 Pheasant Road, and I don't know whether I'm for or against it because my survey that was done in 1992 says that, that it's a 10-foot utility easement. Now, does that 50-foot easement extend past that first lot there, or, you know, all the way through, all the way through to the end of our subdivision?
Mr. Patrick, do you have any input on this?
I'm trying to get my map going here.
And my survey was done by Tyler, so...
I don't know if it is.
Go all the way to...
To the end, right down.
Donald Ridge Road, right?
To the end of subdivision?
Does it go all the way to Donald Ridge?
Wow.
So that would really affect, you know, my decision-making, if that, if that indeed is true. But my survey says something different. And I don't know when this, when this happened. When did this right-of-way occur? And was it established?
I didn't know it was going to be an issue tonight, so I really haven't dwelt on this, to tell the truth. The right-of-way, I'm not sure when it was established. It's shown on, on deed work. Brent Saltzer might shed a little more light on this than I at this point, but it's, it's an old right-of-way that's been there, and basically it would go through people's backyards, so I'm not sure that it's...
It's not on here. This one, this one's on here.
Thing at this point in time.
Okay.
Or it might be a desired thing if you're a property owner, and you want to, you know, have access at some point to Donald Ridge Road.
You'd have to build a public street to really...
Yeah, yeah.
...use of it, but...
But why would, then why would you just do the one piece over here and not do the whole thing if you're going to remove the...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm Brent Saltzer, 201, Lee Andrew Lane.
Go ahead, you go ahead.
You know, Aron, when we had the survey done of the piece of property that we had rezoned, there was a title commitment that was issued, and it's back from, I believe, '78 is when this old county right-of-way showed up. And the only reason that showed up was from the title commitment. And then Bobby French put it on the survey, and so that's when the questions started being asked. Our understanding is when that part of town was annexed, the right-of-way is what came with it. So what, as far as what we're trying to do, we're actually trying to keep that from being able to be developed in the future, not give ourselves the opportunity or the ability to develop it. And I was, my understanding, oh yeah, and so my understanding is that it does actually run from Salem Road all the way west to, you know, the western point of what their subdivision is. So, and again, it was a, my understanding was a old county road that was grandfathered in.
Am I clear here that there, right now, we have two different surveys?
Mine was done in '92.
Yeah, and I, I can't speak for his survey. I don't know if there was actually a title commitment that was documented incorporated in this survey.
Why don't, why don't we, why don't we hold this in committee until, until they can get that worked out?
So moved.
And was there, was there an actual copy of the survey that was submitted with our application? And if so, there should be the exceptions that were in the deed policy too. I'm happy to get that to you.
We don't have enough.
It was in the, it was in the application, then?
It's not in here.
Yeah. Okay. So, so I have a motion and a second to the whole listening committee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Seven to zero.
So, so that we're clear though, Brent, will you get with the planning department to talk about it and then communicate with them, or just so everybody's going to communicate?
Good.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Good deal. Next up, we have a public hearing to discuss the portion of utility easement of Lot 2 in Lewis Crossing. We'll now declare this public hearing open. Likewise, if you'd like to speak for or against this, please state your name and address.
Yeah, my name's Bobby French. My office 1021 Front Street. I'm representing, excuse me, Lukan Retail, and they're just trying to close a portion of this easement in there. I think they're wanting to extend one of the buildings over there, and the easement was bigger, really bigger than what it needed, and I think Conway Corp. and everybody said nobody had a problem with it, so just kind of what we'd like to do.
Thank you, Bobby. Anyone else like to speak for or against? Okay, we'll declare this public meeting closed. Counsel, it's back before you.
I'll make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Seven to zero.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance, and I have this as 01824. Is
that correct?
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven to zero. Thank you, Ms. Winningham. Tonight, we have two public hearings on the agenda. The first public hearing is a discussion of the closing of a unbuilt right-of-way running through property identified as 2902 Pheasant Road. I now declare this public hearing open, and if someone would like to speak for or against, if you approach the podium, please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Henry Zimrevenner. I reside at 2990 Pheasant Road, and I don't know whether I'm for or against it because my survey that was done in 1992 says that, that it's an eight, a 10-foot utility easement. Now, does that 50-foot easement extend past that first lot there, or, you know, all the way through, all the way through to the end of our subdivision, or...
Mr. Patrick, do you have any input on this?
I'm trying to get my map going here.
All right.
And my survey was done by Tyler, so...
I don't know if it is.
Go all the way to...
To the end, right down.
Donald Ridge Road, right?
To the end of subdivision?
Does it go all the way to Donald Ridge?
Wow.
So that would really affect, you know, my decision-making, if that, if that indeed is true. But my survey says something different. And I don't know when this, when this happened. When did this right-of-way occur? And was it established?
I didn't know it was going to be an issue tonight, so I really haven't dwelt on this, to tell the truth. The, the right-of-way, I'm not sure when it was established. It's shown on, on deed work. Brent Saltzer might shed a little more light on this than I at this point, but it's, it's an old right-of-way that's been there, and basically it would go through people's backyard, so I'm not sure that it's...
It's not on here. This one, this one's on here.
A desired thing at this point in time.
Okay.
Or it might be a desired thing if you're a property owner, and you want to, you know, have access at some point to Donald Ridge Road.
You'd have to build a public street to really...
Yeah, yeah.
...use of it, but...
But why would, then why would you just do the one piece over here and not do the whole thing if you're going to remove the...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm Brent Saltzer, 201, Lee Andrew Lane.
Go ahead, you go ahead.
You know, Aron, when we had the survey done of the piece of property that we had rezoned, there was a title commitment that was issued, and it's back from, I believe, '78 is when this old county right-of-way showed up. And the only reason that showed up was from the title commitment. And then Bobby French put it on the survey, and so that's when the questions started being asked. Our understanding is when that part of town was annexed, the right-of-way is what came with it. So what, as far as what we're trying to do, we're actually trying to keep that from being able to be developed in the future, not give ourselves the opportunity or the ability to develop it. And I was, my understanding, oh yeah, and so my understanding is that it does actually run from Salem Road all the way west to, you know, the western point of what their subdivision is. So, and again, it was a, my understanding was a old county road that was grandfathered in.
Am I clear here that there, right now, we have two different surveys?
Mine was done in '92.
Yeah, and I, I can't speak for his survey. I don't know if there was actually a title commitment that was documented incorporated in this survey.
Why don't, why don't we, why don't we hold this in committee until, until they can get that worked out?
So moved.
And was there, was there an actual copy of the survey that was submitted with our application? And if so, there should be the exceptions that were in the deed policy too. I'm, I'm happy to get that to you.
We don't have enough.
It was in the, it was in the application, then?
It's not in here.
Yeah. Okay. So, so I have a motion and a second to the whole listening committee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thanks.
So, so that we're clear though, Brent, will you get with the planning department to talk about it and then communicate with them, or just so everybody's...
Spread out with...
Just so everybody's going to communicate?
Good.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Good deal. Next up, we have a public hearing to discuss the portion of utility easement of Lot 2 in Lewis Crossing. We'll now declare this public hearing open. Likewise, if you'd like to speak for or against this, please state your name and address.
Yeah, my name's Bobby French. My office 1021 Front Street. I'm representing, excuse me, Lukan Retail, and they're just trying to close a portion of this easement in there. I think they're wanting to extend one of the buildings over there, and the easement was bigger, really bigger than what it needed, and I think Conway Corp. and everybody said nobody had a problem with it, so just kind of what we'd like to do.
Thank you, Bobby. Anyone else like to speak for or against? Okay, we'll declare this public meeting closed. Counsel, it's back before you.
I'll make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Anyone else like to speak for or against?
Yes.
Okay, we'll declare this public meeting closed. Counsel, it's back before you.
I'll make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Seven to zero.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance, and I have this as 01824. Is that correct?
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Isby?
Here.
And Mr. Pruitt will not be here tonight. Let's see, you should have received copies of the February 13th, 2018 City Council minutes. Any changes or corrections?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Seven to zero.
Next up, we have our financials. Mr. Tyler Winningham will report the financial report ending January 31st of 2018. Mr. Winningham.
Uh, everything's good. Thank you. Good night.
That's so good.
It seriously is. I mean, that's really the, the underlying theme tonight. I mean, if you look across, you know, all these funds that we look at monthly, which we call our major funds, every one of them is in a better shape January 18 than they were January 17. General Fund is, is, is the biggest example of that. You know, for one thing, sales tax is up almost 7%, so we're, we're staying on that train. Overall, revenues, you know, up about $300,000 compared to where they were same month last year, and expenditures are down. So when we were looking at January in 17, we were off to $118,000 deficit start, and this year we're off to $306,000 surplus start. So everything, everything's looking well. And as I mentioned, all the other funds as well, they're not quite as dramatic as General Fund, but they all are off to a better start than what we saw in 17. So, you know, the same trend we had going last year seems to be still intact. Department heads are keeping their expenditures in check, and revenues are looking good, so hopefully that keeps going.
Thank you, Ms. Winningham. Any questions from Ms. Winningham?
Make a motion to approve the monthly financials.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the monthly financials. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven to zero. Thank you, Ms. Winningham. Tonight, we have two public hearings on the agenda. The first public hearing is a discussion of the closing of a unbuilt right-of-way running through property identified as 2902 Pheasant Road. I now declare this public hearing open, and if someone would like to speak for or against, if you approach the podium, please state your name and address.
My name's Henry Zimrevenner. I reside at 2990 Pheasant Road, and I don't know whether I'm for or against it because my survey that was done in 1992 says that, that it's an eight, a 10-foot utility easement. Now, does that 50-foot easement extend past that first lot there, or, you know, all the way through, all the way through to the end of our subdivision, or...
Mr. Patrick, do you have any input on this?
I'm trying to get my map going here.
And my survey was done by Tyler, so...
I don't know if it is.
Go all the way to...
To the end, right down.
Donald Ridge Road, right?
To the end of subdivision?
Does it go all the way to Donald Ridge?
Wow.
So that would really affect, you know, my decision-making, if that, if that indeed is true. But my survey says something different. And I don't know when this, when this happened. When did this right-of-way occur? And was it established?
I didn't know it was going to be an issue tonight, so I really haven't dwelt on this, to tell the truth. The, the right-of-way, I'm not sure when it was established. It's shown on, on deed work. Brent Saltzer might shed a little more light on this than I at this point, but it's, it's an old right-of-way that's been there, and basically it would go through people's backyards, so I'm not sure that it's...
It's not on here. This one, this one's on here.
A desired thing at this point in time.
Okay. Or it might be a desired thing if you're a property owner, and you want to, you know, have access at some point to Donald Ridge Road.
You'd have to build a public street to really...
Yeah, yeah.
...use of it, but...
But why would, then why would you just do the one piece over here and not do the whole thing if you're going to remove the...
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm Brent Saltzer, 201, Lee Andrew Lane.
Go ahead, you go ahead.
You know, Aron, when we had the survey done of the piece of property that we had rezoned, there was a title commitment that was issued, and it's back from, I believe, '78 is when this old county right-of-way showed up. And the only reason that showed up was from the title commitment. And then Bobby French put it on the survey, and so that's when the questions started being asked. Our understanding is when that part of town was annexed, the right-of-way is what came with it. So what, as far as what we're trying to do, we're actually trying to keep that from being able to be developed in the future, not give ourselves the opportunity or the ability to develop it. And I was, my understanding, oh yeah, and so my understanding is that it does actually run from Salem Road all the way west to, you know, the western point of what their subdivision is. So, and again, it was a, my understanding was a old county road that was grandfathered in.
Am I clear here that there, right now, we have two different surveys?
Mine was done in '92.
Yeah, and I, I can't speak for his survey. I don't know if there was actually a title commitment that was documented incorporated in this survey.
Why don't, why don't we, why don't we hold this in committee until, until they can get that worked out?
So moved.
And was there, was there an actual copy of the survey that was submitted with our application? And if so, there should be the exceptions that were in the deed policy too. I'm, I'm happy to get that to you.
We don't have enough.
It was in the, it was in the application, then?
It's not in here.
Yeah. Okay. So, so I have a motion and a second to the whole listening committee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So, so that we're clear though, Brent, will you get with the planning department to talk about it and then communicate with them, or just so everybody's...
Spread out with...
Just so everybody's going to communicate?
Good.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Good deal. Next up, we have a public hearing to discuss the portion of utility easement of Lot 2 in Lewis Crossing. We'll now declare this public hearing open. Likewise, if you'd like to speak for or against this, please state your name and address.
Yeah, my name's Bobby French. My office 1021 Front Street. I'm representing, excuse me, Lukan Retail, and they're just trying to close a portion of this easement in there. I think they're wanting to extend one of the buildings over there, and the easement was bigger, really bigger than what it needed, and I think Conway Corp. and everybody said nobody had a problem with it, so just kind of what we'd like to do.
Thank you, Bobby. Anyone else like to speak for or against? Okay, we'll declare this public meeting closed. Counsel, it's back before you.
I'll make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Passes seven to zero. Next up, we have a report of our standing committees. Mr. Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on this portion of the agenda is a resolution to request the designation of Central Arkansas Transit Authority Rock Region Metro as the recipient of the Conway Section 5307 funds for the operation and management of a van pool program, and we discussed this at committee meeting. And Candy, welcome to the podium,
A motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero.
Make a motion.
Started back in nineteen ninety-seven.
Yes, it was. It's been a very long time. I do have a tiny change to make. They, my attorney, I said.
Tell them who you are, Marcy.
I said.
Tell them, tell them who you are, Marcy.
For the record.
For the record.
Oh.
Your name.
Marcy Garrett, two oh-five Mill Pond Road, Conway, Arkansas.
Thank you, Marcy.
Okay. Sorry, everybody knows me. Anyway, there was, Jerry Park moved out of our district. He is not deceased. This, there's a piece of paper in here that says Jerry's deceased. And Jerry's very much alive. So I wanted to make that one tiny correction in there. And I'm working with, we have a balance that we are gonna be redistributing to everybody in the district. And we have all of that taken care of. And any funds that we receive in the future will be directed to the city. And so I'm gonna get Chuck Clausen to talk to my attorney, David Minns, so they can talk their attorney thing and get that worked out. And for a temporary stop measure, I had the Treasury Department stop sending the checks to Regions Bank because that account no longer exists. And so anything that comes in will come to me, which I don't like at all. That, that's why I want to get this settled and get it where we can have this go directly to the city and then I'm not in the middle of it. But, because there may be little, little, we had like ten people that were delinquent and they may come rolling in at some point. So there may be little dabs of money here and there that come in along the way. And, you know, we can't keep the district open into infinity waiting on whether somebody's gonna pay their taxes or not. And so we made the decision to go ahead and close the district. And any additional funds would go directly to the city. But I talked to Mike Garrett today and briefly talked to Chuck a minute ago. But I'll get Chuck and David Minns talking. And then somebody tell me what to do so I can get out of the middle of it.
The account, the account still has a balance, though, right? Is there any way you can open up the account to continue to accept payments? I don't know if it's such a good idea for you to be taking payments directly.
And the money cannot go to the city, from what I understand.
So we'll deal with the finances. But in the meantime, I'd open up the account and let it at least accept payments until we get, the district can be closed, but the account doesn't have to be.
I'll ask, but I think the account's already been closed.
I, I would ask if I were you.
Yeah. I think the account's already been closed.
Okay.
Um, I'll, I'll, I'll double-check that first thing tomorrow. But I believe they've already closed the account. And there's a company that's doing the distribution of the funds to the residents that are in District eleven. So, um.
You need to get me.
And, and, and we're not talk, we're not talking about a lot of money that's gonna be coming in. It shouldn't be any kind of large sum, but it may trickle in. And the, what I was told is the money goes to the people in the district first and second to the city. So once we close it out, like we have proposed here, once the district is closed out, then any remaining funds that come in go to the city.
Well, I'll, I'll work on that.
Okay. Okay. Can somebody give me an ordinance number?
We're oh eighteen twenty-five.
Okay.
We can go ahead and proceed to this tonight. Okay.
See if anybody have any questions?
I don't think I do, Marcy.
Okay.
All right. Tell, tell Racy I said aye.
I'll do it.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. We pass that. Will, I'll take a motion at this time to adopt this ordinance?
I need to make a mo, do we already waive the readings?
We gotta waive the readings.
Okay, all right.
Have we waived the readings?
Yeah.
I make a motion to waive the readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We'd already done that, my mistake.
I make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance and its emergency clause.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance with emergency clause. Any further discussion?
Chuck, was there anything in, in any of this about the money?
No, ma'am.
So we don't need to worry about that?
Basically closing the district and then discharging the commissioners. The, the finance, that's what I really wasn't understanding why the account was closed. And especially why it was closed before the district was closed.
Right.
I would have left it open to continue taking funds into that account until it can all be distributed. And, and some of the ones that are making contributions could be contacted if there is some sort of, you know, how they're gonna distribute the funds. I'll find out from her attorney.
But Chuck, you're saying that the city can't, because we had a similar situation where another water district closed.
Well, it's my understanding, though, that it was basically returned to one of the main contributors to the water district who then just donated, would have, in essence, donated to the city for street improvements. Is that, is that the one we're referring to?
What we did is we met with the residents in that water improvement district. And we did certain improvements with that area. Yeah.
This is the case where the Improvement District collected more, an amount so much that they have to refund it back to the actual participants?
Okay.
The only money that'll be coming to the city will be the delinquent payments that have not been collected, collected as of date.
Okay. They, they had, that was District ten. They had roughly thirty thousand dollars left. I think you can see in the paperwork that I submitted that we have, you know, in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. And the reason why District ten went with going ahead and giving that money to the city was because it would have not amounted to much money to each individual landowner within the district, where we have a larger sum of money. So it amounts to a whole lot more money to the individuals in the district. You know, they'll, they'll recover roughly seventy-five percent of what they paid in their water district taxes for last year. And so we felt like that was the right move to make in our case. So we, we were a little different than District ten in the distribution of the funds. That's the reason why we did it this way. That, and, and so it's my understanding, oftentimes districts are closed and, you know, money trickles in and gets left out there into infinity and, you know, falls in a hole. And what I'm trying to do is prevent that from happening by, you know, having it go from the Treasurer's Office to the city, you know, for anything in the future. We've got all current, we, we've got all current payments. Everything that the Tax Assessor's Office, the Treasurer's Office have, we have all of that money already in our account. So there, so there's nothing that we're anticipating coming right now. But there's the potential for money to come in the future. And I don't want it to fall off into a hole. And so I was wanting to set it up where it goes directly to the city.
You'll have, I think, yeah, Mike will have to look into that. Mike is the city attorney.
Yeah.
We, we can do this portion tonight, though.
Yes.
And then take it. Thank you, Marcy.
And I'll, I'll work with you guys and I'll have David call you.
Thank you, Marcy.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes. In emergency clause?
Is there one?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith? Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Both of us pass seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance appropriating funds to purchase additional radio equipment for the airport department. And Mr. Josh Zilks is to the front and center of the campus.
Yes, sir.
Go.
Go. What we're asking for tonight, we need to appropriate forty-one hundred dollars to finish integrating our existing airport, airplane VHF radios with the city's existing radio system. So we originally installed that antenna up at the comm center and we didn't get the coverage that we wanted. So this money will allow us to move that out to the airport and relay it back to the comm center and get to where we want to be.
I make a motion, we waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
Oh eighteen twenty-six. Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Passes seven to zero. Thank you, Josh. Mr. Hawkins.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance appropriating grant funds received from FEMA for the replacement of the Gatlin Park Pedestrian Bridge on Tucker Creek Trail for the Street and Engineering Department. And Mr. Vincent, would you like to say anything? Or Candy, would you like to say anything? I'll let Candy handle this.
We received money from FEMA. And this is one of our first checks that we received. And it will, it's a seventy-five percent reimbursement from FEMA. And FEMA's office will be able to take that money and replace the Gatlin Park Pedestrian Bridge. Of course, they'll have to put some money with it, you know, their twenty-five percent. But this will be able to, this, we've got our money in the bank. Brian's already put it and transferred it over to their funds. So that's all this is, is just allowing us to do that. And they have access to it when they actually start spending it on the project.
Make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance. And I have that as twenty-eight.
Twenty-seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? I'm glad to see y'all fix this. I ride my bike across that. When my weight gets on that little bridge, it shakes me up, so. Mr. Garrett.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance appropriating donation funds received for the Historic District Commission. And we have an accounting ordinance to be read for this. It's ordinance oh eighteen twenty-eight.
Make a motion, waive the readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance accepting the annexation of some lands comprised of three point one five acres identified as sixty-one sixty-two and sixty-two thirty-one Marshall River Road. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their regular meeting February twentieth of this year. And at that time, the commission voted eight to nothing that this request be sent to City Council with a recommendation of approval. We have an ordinance to read for this item. It's ordinance oh eighteen twenty-nine.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes seven to zero. Ms. Hooper? I'm sorry. It's okay. But we, we can move along here and we'll see if there are any. I'll take a motion. So moved? We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? If you have any questions, Mr. and Ms. Hooper here?
No. Pretty easy.
Mr. Garrett.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Seven to zero. Thank y'all for being here.
Welcome to town.
Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Hawkins.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rezone property located at eight twenty-five and eight twenty-seven Faulkner Street. It presently is zoned R two A. The requested zoning is for oh two. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on February twentieth. And at that time, the commission voted eight to nothing to send this to City Council with a recommendation of approval. We have an ordinance for this item. It's ordinance oh eighteen thirty.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins.
And the final item on this portion of the agenda, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rezone property at thirteen hundred South Donaghy Avenue. It presently is zoned A one. The requested zoning is oh one. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on February twentieth of this year. And at that time, the commission voted seven to one that the request be forwarded to City Council with a recommendation of approval. And it was Justin Brown voting in opposition at the Planning Commission level. And we have an ordinance for this item. It's ordinance oh eighteen thirty-one. It's ordinance O-1831.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to zero.
Do you know what they're, yeah, what they're gonna do with the property?
What is this gonna be? Anybody know?
Ms. Blankenship? And I would like to thank the Blankenship family, is, she's, they have donated two pieces of property to the city in the last, last little bit. Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. I'm Elizabeth Blankenship, and I, on the, uh, I own this property. I just sold 1306 South Donaghy. This is the seven acres behind that property, and, uh, our intention from the very beginning was to build independent patio homes for people over 50, and, um, since we sold the frontage property, and it was zoned A-1, uh, it required street frontage, and so we met with the city, and they suggested that we rezoned to O-1. We obtained a 25-foot easement from, uh, the new owners, from Donaghy back to this piece of property.
I did not have it. Did I? Did I? Did that answer your question, ma'am? I'm sorry? Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Did that answer your question? Any other questions for Ms. Blankenship?
Do we have a motion?
We, we've waived the three readings.
I make, second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion?
Uh, this might be ordinance 30. Is that right?
I've got 31.
31.
So did we do item number seven on the agenda? Has been brought to my attention. Did I miss that?
It passed, I have it passing seven to zero.
We already passed it.
That was Faulkner Street.
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's okay. That's all right. I make a mistake, you know? I'm not scared to say.
That's why I didn't come forward, forward, because I thought, well, that wasn't about right.
Any, any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter? Ms. Smith? Mr. Jones?
Yes.
I thought I, I thought...
I just had a question. I'm sorry. Excuse me. Y'all talked the gun over.
So patio homes, he said yes.
It's still living. Okay.
Yes.
Yes and yes.
Right.
Yes. Is that the last one?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna start, we're gonna vote again.
Do you have any other questions? I wanna make sure that...
No, that's good.
How many units you gonna put in here?
There'll be about 18.
Cool. Cool. I think there's a market.
Oh, definitely, yeah.
There's a market.
Mr. Garrett?
Let's try this again. Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Passes seven to zero. Thank you, Ms. Blankenship. And again, thank you for y'all's, uh, contributions in the past. We really appreciate that.
Uh-huh.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Yes, sir.
Well, now we get to do something really fun. Jamie and, and Steve and Candy have just really worked hard on this, and, uh, it's our first splash pad, so I'm gonna let them, they're, they're gonna show you something tonight that's really gonna impress you.
Karaoke, right?
Yeah, yeah, karaoke.
Good evening, everybody.
Need some help? You good?
These two will never admit it, but if they actually got their proposal approved by the state of Arkansas Department, Department of Public Tourism in the first round.
Oh, all right. Yes. Good job.
We are ready.
And it was, let me tell you something, it was tough, because the group that we went up behind brought the penguins from the Little Rock Zoo, so you've got the little penguins waddling up there, and everybody thinks they're cute. So when we got up to speak, we said, listen, if you'll give us the money, we'll, we'll,[1377.01]